Good morning, I'd like to bring the December fourteenth, two thousand sixteen Planning and Zoning Meeting to order. Would everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abbott.
Here.
Commissioner Selberg.
Here.
Commissioner Bruhl.
Here.
Commissioner Azarmi.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Beller.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Gordon. Chairman Flouche.
Here.
Thank you, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. A couple of announcements, anyone who has not yet signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete the request to speak form, which is also located in the lobby next to the sign up sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item, including sub items that you intend to speak on. Please note that there are stairs on the right, left, and the center aisle, and we wish that you would use caution when using the stairs. There's also a ramp located at the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to use or present at today's meeting, please have seventeen copies and give them to the staff member in the back of the auditorium. She has her hand up. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your document. Please place the document on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your document to go on record, you must hand those to the clerk with your presentation with the agenda item clearly marked on the document. Members of the public cannot speak to the staff members that are sitting on the tables up front with the microphones during the meeting. If you have any questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium who can meet you in the lobby. All speakers are limited to two minutes to make their presentations and statements. Everyone, please turn off your cell phone, pagers, or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must receive a phone call, please leave the meeting area and go out for your conversation. We also ask the audience refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The items with a recommendation made by the Commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, January third, two thousand seventeen, at nine thirty AM in the same location with the exception of any continued items. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building at campus are tobacco-free area, which means no smoking is allowed curb to curb. Also, only bottled water is allowed in the auditorium, no food, soda, coffee, et cetera, is allowed. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch at one PM to two. I don't think we'll be here that long. Approval of the minutes from last month, everybody have a chance to review, any questions, comments, corrections? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve November ninth, or ninth, minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Selberg, second by Commissioner Abbott. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, thank you very much. Getting on to our regular agenda. Item number one, A.
Item one A is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor parcel number three zero six zero two zero one two from an A general zone to a CMO, commercial manufacturing, open lot storage zone, to bring the property into compliance and to allow for a hundred and seventy-five-foot monopole communication tower in the Golden Valley vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. The applicant requests this zone change to CMO to bring the property into zoning compliance with the current use of an outdoor storage facility for recreational vehicles, boats, and trailers, and to allow for a hundred and seventy-five-foot monopole communication tower. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Would you like to make a comment?
Good morning, Steve Gibson, St. Charles Tower. We appreciate staff's review and agree with the recommendation conditions, including plan, application submittal, and compliance with the view obstruction requirements of section thirty-seven E four, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions of the speaker?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is this the same request, basically, that was made and approved by the Board of Supervisors in two thousand ten, and the rezoning expired due to conditions not met?
I believe it is due to the screening. We intend to put in a view obstructing slats facing all adjacent properties.
I just have a question, why is it different the way it's being presented now and what's going to be done and what was done back then?
This is to support potential proposed wireless communications facility. I'm with St. Charles Tower, application, or agenda item one B is also our item, and we want to ensure that the property is in compliance for future uses.
Is it going to be a go-forward thing though now?
Correct.
When would you anticipate it would be finished?
I'm sorry, the...
You're gonna start.
The tower's there now, right?
No, no tower. We're yet to zone the tower based on the potential rezone to CMO.
And then how long after that will you proceed with the work on it?
There's a site plan review process, we'll pursue that, and then upon approval, we'll complete the zoning requirements.
I like the idea of having it there, I was just curious on some things I read in here about what happened in two thousand ten. Thank you.
Any additional questions to the speaker? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any discussion with the Commission? Not? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item one A.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Walker, a second by Commissioner Azarmi. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item one B.
Item one B is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit on assessor parcel number three zero six zero two zero one two to allow for a hundred and seventy-five-foot monopole communication tower in a CMO, commercial manufacturing, open lot storage zone in the Golden Valley vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Okay, the applicant is present. Any questions of the applicant? I guess not. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve for a staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Abbott and a second by Commissioner Selberg. Those in... any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item... Two A. Two A.
Item two A is a request for an amendment to the Mojave County general plan from a rural development area land use designation to a suburban, or suburban development area land use designation to allow for the creation of residential parcels for assessor parcel number three one seven zero eight zero two one in the Dolan Springs vicinity. This item was heard at the November ninth Plan and Zoning Commission meeting and was continued for thirty days per the Commission's request for further clarification from the applicant and the attendants of Mojave County flood control staff.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant present? Kathy's not here.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I may ask Randy Girma from the flood control, if he can come on over.
Give us a little insight into your letter.
What we learned from this project is that part of the property that is being, going to be marketed, I believe in the near future, and the marketing is going to be done outside of United States and, you know, for the Hispanic community and in Mexico, is in the severe flood plain. And the letter that you mentioned, Randy, if you could elaborate on that so we have a better understanding, because it seems like some of these properties are not even, you know, feasible to, for any possibility. So please go, if you could, you know, elaborate on that, please.
Sure. There are... The main lot in question at this time is located next to one of the tributaries, one of the parts of the Detroital Wash. At this location, the Detroital Wash has a watershed area of more than two hundred square miles that drains to this location. It is mapped in a FEMA floodplain. It's a floodplain A, Zone A, it's called, which is an approximate unstudied floodplain, meaning no one has ever studied it enough to determine exactly how much flow there is or how deep the water is across the property. There are approximate methods that FEMA has approved and the state has approved for estimating flow across this property, which, and I've performed some calculations, and those are included in the memo that was sent to you. In summary, there are very large flows across this property. It would be, it's possible, but very expensive to develop this land, in a summary.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
So basically, I mean, because of the value of the property, which is not in an area that would be feasible, I just wanted to make sure, you know, the Commission would understand that it would be almost impossible from the feasibility, cost-wise, that, you know, to be able to construct anything there. But, you know, again, by changing the general plan and basically making it available for sale, again, being outside of the United States, we just want to make sure that, you know, we are not going to be responsible not to disclose that information. And one thing we ask the applicant to do is to contact you and kind of work out, I even made a recommendation to exclude the area that is in a severe floodplain from the project, and I don't believe that attempt has been done. Have there been any, in the past thirty days, have you talked to the applicant or the property owner to see if that intention is going to be in place?
I have had conversations with Kathy Hicks about this development, and I've relayed to her the same information that is in this memo, and I've relayed to her, in fact, Monday, I believe I talked to her. So she is aware of that.
Has there been anything concluded from the meeting? I mean...
No, not that I know of.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just for the information of the Commission, Kathy Taggert Hicks had a death and immediate family day before yesterday.
Oh.
And she would like the opportunity to speak on behalf of the owner, but I would suggest that we postpone this item so that she has that opportunity at our next meeting.
I don't have a problem with that. Maybe we should just get to that and forego the time for right now.
You need a motion?
Yes, I do, sir.
I move we postpone this item until our next meeting.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a... Motion by Commissioner Burle and a second by Commissioner Abbott. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
While we have Randy here, because we don't want him to be distracted next month again and again. So the memo that you send us, that stands, right? I mean, you're not changing any part of it as a result of the meeting with, you know, Kathy or reviewing it or anything like that. So your memo stands the way it is?
That's correct, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May I add to clarify a few more things that Randy said? Randy described it accurately, but I just wanted to clarify the flood control regulations a little more detail so the Commission understands clearly what is at stake here. Mojave County is required to follow the National Flood Insurance Program, federal regulations. These are FEMA regulations. So the Mojave County flood control ordinance follows that word by word. And according to that, if a development goes into the floodplain or possibly the floodway of a river, which this is the case here, it's more likely a floodway where the major flood goes down, then for safety reasons, the developer has to establish a base flood elevation. And the base flood elevation is the one percent probability that will be flooded, and then has to elevate above that.
One foot, right?
Yeah, one foot above that. So I just wanted to clarify just the magnitude of the problem here is that... So basically, the burden is on the developer, will be on the developers. This is a five-acre property, if they spread it down to one-acre properties, and each one of them will have to do that, that later on. And the burden is on them, and to make an engineering study like that is very costly, and it could be tens of thousands of dollars just to do the engineering study. So we at flood control district, and Randy is our engineer, he used available methods that FEMA and ADWR has that's acceptable. It's not a detailed study, but it's unacceptable. It might be conservative, may or may not be conservative, but based on that, what Randy established, they would have to elevate any building on that property somewhere around nine to twenty feet. Okay, so it would be up pretty high. And even then, even when they elevate it, it may not be acceptable to issue a building permit because if it's a floodway, then there is other regulations, then it cannot displace any water, so may have to build a very narrow, tall foundation and put the building on top of that so it, you know, can just do it with...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I really have some confusion on this issue. The last time Kathy Taggert Hicks was here, she was talking about a split that is different than the map that is in our packet, and she's also made some other points. I think hearing this argument is, and this information is certainly germane to the issue, but I don't know if it's germane to the issue of postponing in order to hear a representative of the owner, because we're only hearing these facts, and I believe that there are arguments that possibly rebut or add to the information that we would be considering.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I think the point is, we are going to go ahead and postpone it anyway, but since we have Randy and Nick here, we are trying to make sure that we are educated about the situation is out there. So we are going to extend it, and Kathy would have the opportunity to address. But I think the severity of the project needs to be, you know, explained to the Commission, that's, I think, is the point.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I agree very much with Mehdi. We've got Randy here to explain it and what Nick has to add. I want it extended because Kathy told me, and she has certain thoughts and ideas, and I have a great deal of respect for her, so that's my reason for seconding it, and I hope everybody agrees with it. But I do think it's good to get the information now, so we have it, and if there's anything else you need to share with us, I'm all ears.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to finish up, just briefly, that basically to build on that property, they would need to get a floodplain use permit. That's the only way. There is no discussion, no matter how much we talk about it, they need a floodplain use permit. And to get a floodplain use permit, that would be the conditions. So they are conditioned, and these regulations are not really county regulations, these are federal that we have to follow. So they would, they could hire an engineer and, and that's what we recommend them to do, to come up with a study, and they may get a little better numbers. But this is the range that we're looking for based on acceptable methods that would not be in detail. So just wanted to put that on record that there would be a requirement to develop this property to get a floodplain use permit, and Randy is our expert, and he's the one who did the calculations, and it's in the memo that was sent to the Commission.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I have absolutely no problem with extending it for, you know, a period of time. I just want to reiterate that my recommendation would be, since we have apples and oranges and rotten eggs in the same basket, for the applicant to consider taking this area of the floodplain out of the application if possible as one option, because, you know, the way this stands, I cannot go forward with that, that, you know, you have all those in one, you know, application, so anyway.
We can discuss all that next month when Kathy gets here.
Can I have it for a second?
Sure, yeah. Any other questions? Any other further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Two B.
Two B is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number three one seven zero eight zero two one from an AR five A agricultural residential five-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential one-acre minimum lot size zone to allow the creation of residential parcels in the Dolan Springs vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. And this is, of course, similar to item two A, except it's a zoning change, so assuming you want to continue that as well.
Yeah. The applicant is not present. Based on our previous discussion, is anybody going to have any questions of Randy at this point, or should we... I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to postpone it for the next meeting.
We have a motion by Commissioner Selberg, a second by Commissioner Keller. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three.
Item three is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit on assessor's parcel number two two one two five zero three eight to allow for outdoor retail sales in an RE, residential recreation zone in the Oatman vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. One letter of opposition was received, and staff does recommend approval with standard conditions. However, we did add an extra condition that is not standard, that's number seven, and that is, the outdoor retail sales area shall be limited to the southeast corner of Oatman Highway and Mural Road.
Is the applicant present?
My name is Steve Anderson, I'm the owner of Black Eagle Investments, which owns this parcel.
Okay.
And it should be Oatman Highway and Quail, not Mural.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about what we're doing here.
Well, Oatman is a tourist area. It basically allows for commercial, subject to a use permit, within the commercial areas.
Downtown Oatman, basically.
Downtown Oatman, and all we're doing is trying to correct something we didn't address earlier.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
The letter of opposition says that, you know, it is a parking space that is being used for retail sale. I know Oatman is a little bit different, and I'm going to ask staff to see if there is some exemption into the, you know...
There's parking just around the corner.
No, I understand, and they park in the streets and all that.
Absolutely.
Right. So the question is that this used to be a parking for...
It was a driveway.
It was a driveway?
Yeah.
Okay. May I ask a question from staff? Oatman, I know it's a historical, I know there was a lot of things grandfathered in, and it seems like there are kind of set of different rules, I'd say ordinance or whatever. So where are we at with that? I mean, what is the latest governing ordinance for the Oatman?
Well, section thirty-seven point A point five, the general provisions of the zoning ordinance, states that general commercial uses that are permitted without a special use permit for the older mining communities of Oatman and Chloride, when the general commercial uses will support tourist activities and are within established commercial areas, shall be permitted. And this property is within established commercial area, and that would be, you know, obviously, Oatman Highway is an established commercial area, not the other areas of the parcel.
Just, I'm trying to get my head around where this is at. Is this when you first drive in from... Bullhead, for example. When you're driving in from Bullhead and you enter into Oatman, is this on the right?
This would be coming from Boundary Cone, which is from Bullhead.
Okay.
It'll be on the right. You'll pass the first store, which is Arizona Girls Shop, and then the next store is the Old Time Photoshop, and this is like to the left of that.
Is that across the street from that old mine that they were playing with and the old building that's about ready to fall down?
It's right across from the old building, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, I got it, okay, good, all right. So is this property near the public restrooms?
Probably within a hundred feet.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for staff.
Go right ahead.
And in our information here, it says, this property is... And in our information here, it says, "This property is approximately 69 acres in size." I don't understand that.
Yes, sir, it was approximately 69 acres in size. I believe, historically, it was a mining claim. It's how the parcel was created, you know, way back when, and it's just, it's never been split down.
Well, we're talking about an area, I know right where it is, and I have no objection to it, that's 100 or so feet by 40 or 50 feet.
Yeah, it is a small area within the parcel.
69 acres get into making these changes. That's what I don't understand.
May I answer that?
Yeah.
The parcel number represents four patented mining claims. A little bit of that has been needed out over the years, but this particular spot is, as Commissioner says, is 100 by 10 feet.
So this is just part of the 69 acres?
Yes, that's correct, because the parcel number represents all 69. They asked us to use that as the parcel.
Okay.
So back to staff again, is there anything 10 years down the road that says it's that size versus 69 acres?
Well, that's why we have the condition that limits it to the southeast corner of Oatman Highway and, I believe, Quail Road. So...
Well, that's covered.
So, yeah, that's why it's not the whole parcel, it's just that small area.
Okay.
And the applicant did not provide us of a survey. Otherwise, if they did provide us of a survey...
I was just a little confused.
Okay.
Trying to clarify something.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
The letter of opposition is from Dakota, which I'm familiar with them. They're way away from this project. Why is it that, what is it that, you know, they're opposing? I mean, I don't understand. Do you know, the staff, do they know why? I mean, you know, what is their hardship from this application to, you know, the opposing app... I mean, letter? So far away?
Well, you know, I can't speak to, you know, the intentions of the people who wrote the letter, but I can sure read the letter, if you would like.
Okay.
It says...
I was wondering if there was any hardship to them or anything, but it seems like, you know, they're so far away from each other.
Right. It says, "To whom it may concern, this is in response to the letter we received of a special use permit requested by Black Eagle Investment for property in Oatman. We are property owners in Oatman, and we are opposed to any change in zoning for this parking lot. It was a two-car parking area, is now being used as an outdoor flea market. Sincerely, Tom and Joyce Weller, owners of Dakota Leather and Gift, 220 Main Street in Oatman."
Right. Which, there is a huge parking space in the backside of this, which I don't think it's going to interfere with the parking, and most of the tourists, you know, they park on the back and walk down there, so I don't have any objection to that. Thank you.
Any additional questions to the speaker? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve for a staff recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zami, a second by Commissioner Walker.
Chris has a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like the motion to note that number... Condition number seven needs to be changed to reflect Quail, I believe it is Quail, instead of the streets stated in your staff rec.
Okay.
So...
Maybe we should... Could you restate your motion?
I'll make a motion to approve for a staff recommendation with the modification on item number seven.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zami, a second by Commissioner Walker. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four.
Item four is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 35430026 from an AR-10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone to a C2H highway commercial zone to allow for a parking lot adjacent to the Loves Travel Stop in the Kingman vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. And staff does recommend approval with standard conditions.
Is the applicant present? Would you like to give us a little...
Yeah, good morning, commissioners. My name's Alex Fuller, and I'm the real estate project manager for Loves. I'm here to answer any questions. If you want me to give a brief overview, I can do that as well. That adjacent parcel is about 3.91 acres, just to the east of our current store, and all we're really looking to do here is just add some truck parking, expand that truck parking there, just for trucks, no cars. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. I see everything around it's all zone C2H anyway. Any questions of the speaker? I got a question. This came up the last time we were doing a truck stop, I can't remember where it was, but had to do with, and I know in a C2H, it really doesn't make any difference, but the question always comes up by somebody, usually from the audience. Are the rigs going to be that on their perimeter? Are they just going to be able to park their trucks, run them all night long, asleep, and do whatever they're doing? Is that kind of the scenario there?
In this truck parking area?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And, I mean, just so you guys know, we currently have about 50 truck parks there on the current site. This will add 67, giving us around, what is that, 117?
Okay, all right. I just, people always ask, so I thought I would ask, at least get it on the record. Any additional questions? Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item four with staff recommendations.
Second a motion?
We have a motion by Commissioner Walker, a second by Commissioner Abbott. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, guys, for coming. What else we got here? Call to the public. I see nobody wants to talk, so we'll end the public speaking session. Any comments, questions to staff, letters, meetings, anything going on that we should all go do?
I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Well, thank you so much, and so do I, and a prosperous New Year, too. Yeah.
Merry Christmas.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, and we have a motion by Commissioner Selberg, second by Commissioner Walker. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign.